You've always wanted to do that, I know you have.
Oh, I've had my fair gaveling. I've cheered the freaking circus since the Republican Party, I remember.
Oh, that is true.
I've had my down.
Somebody got a whistle?
She's back.
All right, good evening, welcome to our city council meeting. Gosh, you would think there might be something major tonight, I don't know. Um, we are gonna get... Good evening, Camby, welcome to the July 21st, 2021 city council meeting. I think this is our second live meeting, um, back, being back, so, uh, it's great to see everyone here this evening, so thank you. Um, we're gonna stand for invocation and pledge of allegiance, please.
Dear heavenly Father, I thank you so much for everyone that's gathered here this evening. It is so awesome to be back, um, live and in front of people and being able to do the work of our city. Uh, I, I ask for special prayers for our men and women, um, of Camby Fire and the men and women across our state that are working so hard at the various forest fires that are going on and wildfires. Please protect them, please guide them, and please bring them all home safely. I ask this in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, next on our agenda this evening, we have a special, uh, presentation of our Hometown Hero Award. So I'm gonna read the description of the Hometown Hero Award. I think many of you, um, this may be your first time hearing that we have such a, uh, recognition that we do here in the city. So the Camby City Council has established the Hometown Hero Program as a means to provide official recognition from the city for those individuals or organizations who, through their unselfish efforts, contribute in some significant manner to the quality of life in the community and/or to community betterment and the advancement of community goals and vision. The award program is an ongoing process with nominations and recipients being recognized throughout the year. Award recipients will be presented with a certificate from the city in recognition of their specific deeds, actions, or contributions to the, to the Camby community which fall within three categories. These three categories are: community involvement, in recognition of volunteer service and activities which promote the welfare of the citizens of Camby and the Camby community; community leadership, in recognition of those individuals who have assumed a positive leadership role in the community and whose leadership activities have resulted in the advancement of the goals of the community, the enhancement of the community's quality of life, economic vitality, and/or its livability; noteworthy citizen actions is the third category, in recognition of act or acts of a private citizen which are above and beyond the normal responsibility of citizens and that result in a positive event or outcome of benefit to the community. Such actions include acts of heroism, significant donations of financial resources to fund, um, community programs or projects, and other humanitarian acts. In addition to the award recipient receiving a certificate from the city, a special plaque will be placed on display in City Hall with an engraved nameplate of each recipient of the town, Hometown Hero Award. Nominations for the Hometown Hero Award Program must be submitted in writing to City Hall. The letter of nomination should include the following: nominee's full name and address, home of business or telephone number, nominee's occupation and/or title, name of the nominating person or persons, detailed examples, emphasized, underlined, bold print, of the nominee's contribution to the Camby community using the criteria listed above, three letters of support for the nominees from members of the community. Eligibility of the Hometown Hero Award is not limited to residents of the community. Any non-resident whose actions meet the above criteria in any of the three award categories is eligible to receive the award. Nominations will be reviewed by the mayor and city council as they are received. Recipients of the Hometown Hero Award will be officially recognized at a city council meeting where they will be presented their certificates by the mayor. Past honorees have included, uh, City Council Walt Daniels, community member Greg Perez, which I believe is here this evening, um, Doc Harms, and Superintendent Deborah Summers, just to name a few names that have received this award. And tonight, we are gonna add another name to our plaque. So the initial letter that I received, um, to myself and our city manager and our city attorney, um, should I wait and save the name, or should we just get it out there?
For sure they all know who it is.
Does everyone know who it is? I'm not trying to look at them at all, but you know. Um, it is great, it is with great honor that I nominate Mike Zagava for Camby's Hometown Hero Award for community leadership. He was, um, my middle school principal and has never stopped being a mentor and a leader for those who crossed his path. He has inspired so many by his service to our community. As a member of our community for about fifty years, Mike has served our nation with distinction and our community with unfailing compassion, energy, and commitment. A history of his military service spanning decades, including a tour in Vietnam, and honors including the impressive, the United States American Legion of Merit Award is one of those such honors that this man has earned. He has served our community with unfaltering dedication. Some highlights of his service to Camby include, um, forty, forty-seven years of service to our schools, teacher at Echols and Ackerman, vice principal at Ackerman Junior High, principal at Echols Elementary, principal at Ackerman Junior High, two tours there, yikes, good for you.
Was that tougher than Vietnam?
Principal at Trost Elementary, and then most recently, the Camby School Board. His service to our children in our community, he helped develop and organize Camby's Youth Summit. He's done direct work with Camby High School's Key Club and Baker Prairie, Prairies Builders Club as a Kiwanian. Service to the community at large, a longtime member of the Camby Kiwanis Group, longtime member of the Knights of Columbus, member of the Camby VFW Post, service to Camby's Bridging Cultures, St. Patrick's Parish Council, member of Camby's Vietnam Era Memorial Committee, and I'm sure a host of other things that have not been listed here. So tonight, we are here to celebrate and recognize Mike Zagava for his level of service to our community. So, before I have Mike come up here and we put him on the spot and embarrass him with a photo op, um, I just wanna say, Mike, thank you very much. I got to know Mike here probably in the last couple of years, mostly with, um, working on a, a passion project of mine and his and Barry Johnson, where's Barry at?
Barry's here somewhere.
He's here, maybe went to the overflow room. Uh, regarding trying to do, uh, make something happen with the Ackerman School as a community center and a recreation complex. Uh, and so, um, Mike, I appreciate you and your wisdom, your experience, and your leadership in our community, and just, just you yourself as a person. Uh, it has been an honor to get to know you, um, in, on a, on a better level and a different level, so I really do appreciate you, and this is definitely a, um, a recognition that's long overdue. So thank you for all that you have done for our community, and I know that you will continue to do, so thank you. There are many of you that are here, I will open up the microphone if you wanna come up and say a few words. Um, you know, embarrassing stories about Mike are always good, um, quirky anecdotes. How many of you worked with Mike in the school system?
Oh, wow.
Wow, thank you. Well, Mike, if, anybody have anything they wanna say? There's always the first one that needs to like, jump out there and make it happen.
Also, I have a little favorite memory of Mike.
Yeah, please come up here, yeah, come up here to the microphone.
You gotta put it on record.
Put it on record!
This one?
Yep, sit there on the chair and...
Make sure the white screen...
It is, hold the microphone a little bit closer to ya.
My name is Milt Dennison. I was superintendent in Camby when Mike was doing his tours of duty. Uh, I was here for, uh, about six years, and then went to Camas-Worthington. Uh, so Mike was principal at Echols, and because of his military background, he was a man of action. If something was gonna happen, it happened, and Mike took charge. I'll never forget, one morning, he called my office and said, "Milt, we need to evacuate the school." I says, "Tell me more, Mike." He says, "We need to evacuate the school, that's all you need to know." I said, "Tell me more, Mike." He said, "I think there's been a chemical leak, and it's infiltrating the classrooms. It's not safe for the kids." So, well, I'm five minutes away, I'll come over and we'll make a decision on evacuating the school. When I got over there, I did a little tour duty, and it turned out the farmer on the field behind the school that just spread manure all over the field, and he wanted to evacuate the school because of some chicken stuff.
Hey, better to be safe than sorry, right? You never know. Anyone else?
Ms. Mayor, I would just like to thank Mike, Mike, for your service to our community and your service to our nation. Thank you so much for your service, sir.
For sure. Counselor Spohm?
Mike, the mayor pretty much listed about everything I could have possibly listed to thank you, but, uh, I've known you for a long time, and, uh, you were my middle school principal, and you have never stopped being a leader in this community, and I think it is so easy for people to walk away at some point because it gets hard or you get tired, but your love for this community and your skillset have made this, this city a better place, and it will be for decades beyond your time here, so thank you.
Counselor Parker, did you have something?
No, I was just gonna say why.
Yeah, Counsel Spohm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I would say, I've had an opportunity to meet... I'd just like to introduce these people here. I've had an opportunity to meet, um, numerous times with Mike through, um, the last, uh, I don't know, ten or fifteen years, and, um, I've met a lot of really great men and women in my life, and I've never met anybody with, uh, with more honor and dignity than Mike Zagava. Thank you, Mike, for all that you've done for me and our school.
I, I think we can speak for...
Career numbers, I like it, that's good.
I think we speak for all the teachers, um, the one thing I think that stands out is when we would get notes on our box that said, "See Me, Mike." That was it.
That's all that was said, and we worked together and we did a lot of coercive, things together, team, we planned, so we would both get See Me, Mike notes at the same time in our boxes, and we would creep up like we did that, to his office door, you know? We're here, we're here! You know, we'd always work through it together, and it was always great, because by the end, we always knew that Mike had our back and always supported what we did and encouraged us to be creative and to, you know, do what was best for our classrooms and in the school, so. We always appreciate Mike, he was great.
And we all also knew when we sent kids to the office, something was going to happen. We liked that military background. Kids learned to be respectful, but what a great guy, what a great reward.
It was wonderful.
Mike, you and I don't really know each other that well, we haven't gotten to know each other over the last couple of years, but we recently met, and I just have to say that the testament of the amount of people here exemplifies how our meeting was. You were so kind and so nice to me, um, and I really enjoyed that meeting, and, uh, I hope we can have a few more of those because I really had a great time, so congratulations on this award.
Don't be afraid, Mike.
Well, I, I worked as a teacher with Mike from seventy-five on at Ackerman. I also worked with, uh, when he was the vice principal, and then as my principal, and I was his counselor, one of the count, three counselors at the middle school, and I had his son, John, for three years in a row at the middle school, and then we got up to the high school, I moved up to the high school the same year, and I had kids E through K. Mike calls me up and says, "I want you to be John's counselor." I said, "Well, I don't have, I don't have the Z's." He says, "I want you to have John as your, uh, as your counselor E, because I want you to keep track of him." I said, "Mike, look in the mirror." He's a great guy, the one thing Mike has above and beyond is his integrity, honesty, leadership. Uh, in the military, I mean, you don't get to be a chief war nurse or five unless you've got your ducks in the order, and, uh, Mike and I were in Vietnam together, or not together, but at different times, so I know what he went through there. He was a Marine, which is, and that's not fun, so if you're allergic to mud, you don't wanna be a Marine, so. Anyway, Mike, you did, you deserve this, for sure.
I Mary Ashton, I was Mary Christie when I was teaching, and I taught at Echols when Mike was there, as a teacher, and we got to know each other that way, and then he became a principal. And as a principal, he did some amazing things. One of them was, he knew every kid in the school by their last name, and Hiffy went around the school every morning, came into each classroom and said, "Good morning," and addressed the children by their last name, and we had so little discipline because they knew their principal who knew who they were, and that he would hunt them down if there was something going on. So, I've just loved Mike all these years, he was wonderful.
Okay, Mike, now you need to be afraid. Um, I was student council, and so I had my fair share of See Me notes, because there was always something the kids wanted to plan, that there was somebody that was gonna complain. And one of the notes was, "Come see me, we were gonna have opposite sex day." Uh, it was Spirit Week, and boys wanted to dress up and do all these crazy things, and he said, "Some of the teachers are complaining." And I said, "You know what, Mike, if anybody turns gay over this, you can fire me." He said, "Deal," and we shook hands, and it was over. He is a straight shooter, he always has your back, he will be there for you, and he, he doesn't, he doesn't like, um, I'm not quite sure how to say it, but he doesn't go like partisan ways, he goes like, "This is logical, this makes sense, and then you could come to a deal." He was awesome to work for, and I did it for years. Poor Mike had to put up with me for about twenty-eight. So thank you, Mike, I can't even begin to tell you how much I appreciate you.
And I'm just picking up on the, the same lines as Ginny here. Ron Boost, I worked with Mike for I don't know how many years, at least as long as you.
Longer, your year, six months longer.
Yeah, oh, okay, yeah. We're not competitive. But he always had my back, and the integrity with which he conducted himself, and the, the support, and while, love was there also, you know, and that's a hard mix to find. And I gotta also admit the, the humor. One year, it was early when I was there, I think my second or third year, a, a science teacher was absent, and it was open house or back-to-school night. Do you remember Jackie Velzy being gone? And Mike, yeah, I'll cover for her, and he, you know, met with the parents, we had them rotate in every period, and, you know, one time he told them that in science they were going to be, he meant to say the students would be drawing their organisms. But, you know, a few letters didn't make it in there, so somehow, and I don't know how he envisioned them drawing orgasms, but he proudly announced that one, and, anyway, that's one of those stories that, yeah, I don't know if that's well-known, but happy to have it be that way now, and just, on a serious note, best principal I ever could have imagined, thank you.
Mike, would you like to come up? Oh.
He might not want to come.
No. Mr. Crawford.
Tony Crawford, I couldn't resist to share one last story. Uh, Mike Zagava is responsible for perhaps what may have been the single greatest teaching moment I have witnessed in forty-plus years in my career. What happened was, we had this period of time at Ackerman when it was popular for girls with this bright red lipstick to be kissing the mirrors and the, the windows of our school, leaving lip prints, you know, on, on the mirrors. So Mike comes up with a solution. We round up all the usual suspects, bring these girls to the office, and he says, "I'd like you girls to come notice what happens when you leave these lip prints all over the glass at our school." So he takes them to the girls restroom, and on cue, he says, "I want you to notice that Mr. Vile, our head custodian, how hard he has to work to clean up all of this lipstick off the glass." So here's the lip print...
So, here's the lip print on the mirror in the girls' restroom." Joe Vile walks in, doesn't say a word, has his bucket with a scrub brush, takes the scrub brush, walks over to the toilet, swishes it around in the toilet, scrubs the mirror. There was not a single lip print to be found. Well done. Mike, I'd like to invite you. Oh.
So, I'm going to speak for the kids that got in trouble. Actually, I only got in trouble, I think, once or twice, and probably only once or twice because when I did get in trouble, I got the Mr. McBride, and he's seen my office. And so, I went down there, and I had a, well, actually, I do remember what I did, and I'm not going to share it here. The point is this. He could have been heavy-handed, but I think we all know the integrity that he has. He didn't do that, and that helped me grow into the person I am, and now I get the chance to work with his son. So, that's, thank you, Mike. I didn't have a dad around, and he showed me what it was to have a strong man in my life. So, I envy you.
Can I?
You certainly can. Please do.
There is not a lot of time in my life that I've been speechless, and this is one of them. I want to thank all of you for being here. I don't have the words to say, or what to say and how to say it. I want to thank my family, my kids, my lovely wife. There's no way I could have done this without you. My lovely wife. Thank you.
First, I'll give you this piece. So, this says, "The Hometown Hero Award for Mike Zagava in recognition of your outstanding community leadership, as demonstrated by your countless hours of volunteering and helping fellow community members. For this and all you have contributed has resulted in positive benefits to the community and the improved welfare of the citizens of the City of Camby. With sincere thanks and appreciation," thanks, Greg, "from a most grateful and appreciative committee." Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Well, this is the plaque that hangs in City Hall, and now we've just added Mike Zagava, July 21, 2021, to the plaque, of people that have been nominated and have contributed immensely to the success of Camby. And Mike, you've definitely been a huge part of our success, so thank you for all that you have done. Yeah, thank you. So, this will be hanging in the City Hall, if you ever want to come by and see it.
We'd love to get a picture with you and the council. Do we get to vote on this?
Right here in the middle of the seats.
Okay. Ready? One, two. Great.
Yep.
I'm just kidding, we got, thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you. I was just going to ask you, like, light reading for you?
They were sitting at my station, I don't know why.
In case, in case the judge forgets his law. Thank you for that, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Bayla. Bayla Patton, thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening is citizen input and community announcements. This is an opportunity for audience members to address the City Council on items not necessarily on the agenda. Each person will be given three minutes to speak. Please complete a yellow testimony card like these here, they're located on the back podium as you walk in. Staff and City Council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizen input before the meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. For agenda items, please fill out the yellow testimony card and give it to the city recorder, noting which items you wish to address. So, I have three cards, all of them are non-agenda items. First one is Jason Patton wanting to talk about the street fee. Mr. Patton.
Good evening. I assume you knew that I would be here, so really quickly, I thank you very much for covering the fee again tonight, and I am with trepidation excited that something might be done finally about this. A few things I will just point on as a citizen and someone who is in touch with the program. I am not for trying to play catch-up with the fee. I think that will kill it, and so putting a pin in it and starting from here, I think, would be the best option. If you go to a vote, there were two different options essentially laid out, whether it would be, do you want the fee to increase, or do you want the fee at all? I would say, along the lines of the questionnaire that was brought up, the answers, as Counsel Parkler, Counselor Parker said, yes, they would want streets, but no, they don't want to pay for it. And that's the same thing that happened with the parks. If you remember back in the day, there was two questions on the ballot years ago, do you want a park maintenance district, and do you want to pay for it? And the citizens approved the district, but never approved after many years paying for it. And so, that is where the parks fee comes from. Also, I would say that is if you do send it to the vote of the citizens, as counselors, it will be your job, if it fails, to then figure out where that money is coming from. Because a fair amount of what goes towards funding the streets to the city comes from that fee. And if you choose to send it to a vote, and it fails, it is then your responsibility as counselors to figure out how that is going to be funded. And as a member of the Budget Committee for many years, I have no idea where you will find that money in the budget, unless you take it from some of the big departments like police or city management, and I don't see you doing that. The other thing that was brought up was putting a cap on it. I do not recommend a cap, and the reason being is that none of the other fees in the city are really capped. The cost of collecting sewer, garbage, providing water, all of those things are going to go up. The cost of the materials to maintain the streets are going to go up. The only way I could see you putting a cap on it is, the cap goes on the day that the city adds no more streets to the system. Because my, when I did my last calculation of information from Public Works from a year or so ago, and since within a few-year period, there's been almost two miles or more of streets added into the city. And all of that's been added in within the last couple of years, and all of it is going to require the same level of maintenance all at the same time, and that clock is ticking. So, those are just a few of the things that kind of came up in listening to this. Again, I thank you very much for your time tonight, and I look forward to seeing this moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason, appreciate it. Next on the agenda is Paul Yulvasacher. Sorry, excuse me.
One of these days, we'll learn how to say your name.
Regarding the noise and explosions. Hello, sir.
Glad you cleared the room and you've got power. You know, it's going to be a hard act to follow. First off--
Could you say your last name?
Yes, I could. It's Ill-Vasacher, like I-L-L.
Ill-Vasacher.
Yeah.
And again, to be a little bit sarcastic, just think sick, and then you'll have it. All right? Mayor, I want to thank you for engaging me the last time I was here, and if it was a discussion, I think it was, might have got a little heated on my side, but this is where I'm going to pick up on that, and this should be quick. Two comparisons I'd like to make. One is the quiet zone, and the other is our noise-sensitive land use. The issue is noise control, specifically train whistles. At the crossings on Elm, Grant, and Holly Street, solution, spend $1.3 million to change the ambient noise of three railroad crossings. The next one is the noise-sensitive land use. The issue is noise control. That's the same. Specifically explosive devices detonated at the Camby High School varsity football games. Solution, City Council destroys our noise-sensitive land use area because they amended ordinance number 1489. It has changed the ambient noise of our neighborhood. Both examples change the ambient noise in their designated zones. The difference is, the quiet eliminates the noise, while our noise-sensitive land use area, that is our neighborhood and our quiet zone, is eliminated by the detonation of explosive devices. Tradition seems to be the theme or excuse, and I believe it to be an excuse, for continuing the explosions. Yet you are willing to change the tradition of train whistles at three crossings. Our nation recognized certain traditions to be harmful, abusive, as well as discriminatory. As a nation, we amended our constitution to eliminate these behaviors. Amendment 13, 15, 19, and 24 verify my statement. I can read them to you if you want, but we don't need to. Our City Council and the Camby School District does not recognize their tradition, excuse me, lost my place here, that is, the tradition of explosions in our neighborhood as a behavior that is harmful, abusive, and discriminatory, taken a position of security and positioned our neighborhood to be inferior. I am petitioning for equity that is defined in Merriam-Webster's dictionary, justice according to natural law or right, specifically freedom from bias or favoritism, which I believe is happening in here. To the citizens of Camby, our City Council and our school district have core value statements using language such as ethics, accountability, inclusive, quality of life, promote nondiscrimination, and an environment free of harassment. Let me read that one more time. An environment free of harassment in its programs and activities. They have failed us. Please refer to my request for equity, freedom from bias or favoritism. This is the picture that I tried to get, if I may. This is my cat. This is an animal that is abused when fireworks starts. I'm not making it up. I'd bring my cat here, but that would be abusive. It needs to stop. You're getting ready to vote for your graduation ceremony? I will support that, because that's an achievement that many students can be a part of. It doesn't take athletic ability, and the celebration of that would be a specific time and one event, not random. So, I'm in favor of it, but I am definitely adamantly opposed to these explosions, particularly if you continue to go with the quiet zone on the north side and destroy our south side. Thank you. Thank you, Paul, appreciate your time. Next up this evening is Kathleen Polly regarding the industrial traffic on Haynes Road. Ms. Polly, how are you? How have you been?
I am doing very well, thank you. And I would also say that this is probably the last time that you will have to put up with me, because the land that I own in the industrial park, I will only own until next I live on South Nuerro Road, up on top of the hill, but I was raised at Hazel Dell Gardens, and 85 acres of the industrial park came from my family. I heard Counsel Banks talk about how a lot of what you have to deal with is county and state roads, and Haynes Road is a county road. However, when my great-grandparents bought the land that was the original part of Hazel Dell Gardens in 1928, what is now Highway 99E was a gravel road along the railroad tracks, and Haynes Road and First Avenue were what--